Good evening and welcome to our special City Council meeting for Tuesday, September 19th. Would you please join us in pledging allegiance to our country?
Ready to begin? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please do the roll call?
Councilmember Price.
Here.
Councilmember Adam.
Here.
Councilmember McCoy.
Present.
Councilmember Fox.
Here.
And Mayor Bill DeLaPeña.
Present. I don't believe we have any public comments this evening, do we? None? Very good. Then we will move directly to item number 5A, which is the very first pre-screening hearing that we have in the City of Thousand Oaks. Pre-screening? Oh, is it the second pre-screening? Oh, Rick Prinsip, he was the first one, that's right. Okay, it felt like it was the first one. It is the second pre-screening meeting, thank you for the correction, which is a process, a new process, in which the council decides whether to allocate any remaining units from our Measure E bank to a proposed project. And this idea came about from our ad hoc committee, Council Ad hoc Committee of Al Adam and Annie Fox. It gives the public an opportunity to weigh in on any proposal, residential and commercial mixed-use proposal for Thousand Oaks Boulevard, a specific plan. So with that, I will turn it over to Mark Towne, our Community Development Director. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Tonight, what you have before you, as you mentioned, is a pre-screening request. This is to basically determine whether a proposed project should receive an allocation of Measure E units. If the City Council were to allocate units, then there are a couple of other actions that staff is recommending that you conduct tonight, that you take action on tonight. That includes initiation of a general plan amendment for one of the parcels that are involved, and then the other is to allow concurrent processing of the entitlements with the legislative actions. Before I turn it over to Mr. Kearns, the case planner, I just wanted to emphasize that tonight is an allocation and not an approval. So it's allocation, not an approval. Again, should City Council allocate units to this project, then the project will move through the normal development review process, it will receive environmental analysis, it will receive planning commission review and recommendation, and this project, per our standard requirements, will come back to the City Council for final action. So, anyway, with that, I will turn it over again to Steve Kearns to my right. He is the senior planner in the Community Development Department and is the case planner for this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Towne. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council and those in attendance. As mentioned, before you this evening is an allocation, a request for allocation of Measure E units for a proposed mixed-use project. The project site is shown here on the vicinity map. It's at the northwest corner of Caneo School Road, shown here at the easterly extent and Thousand Oaks Boulevard. The property is bound by this red line. The green line shown in this image is the specific plan boundaries for the Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan area. As a matter of background, the proposed project is located in the central district of the Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan. The Boulevard plan was broken up into three districts for allocation of Measure E units that were a matter of right for certain jurisdictions. There is an easterly district which has allocated 71 units, a westerly district also allocated 71, and the central district where this project is located was allocated 72 units. All 72 of the matter-of-right units have been utilized, 36 by the Lupe's project at the westerly extent of the downtown core, and additional 36 units used by the Yolo Apartments located behind to the north of Instrumental Musics. Therefore, the applicant is required to request units for Measure E bank and is requesting 82 units from the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Measure E bank, which currently has 206 units. In order to obtain any of these units, City Council must allocate these units to the pre-screening, this pre-screen step. And what is pre-screening? Pre-screening is actually a step established by the specific plan, which allows City Council to allocate units to projects through this process. And this process provides an opportunity for City Council and for the public to probably comment on any design concept. If the units are allocated, the concept would then go through the normal application procedure. It would authorize the applicant to submit the formal entitlement applications and go through the review process, including public hearings. And in order to evaluate the pre-screening requests, there are predefined criteria established in the specific plan which are utilized and identified in the city staff report. It's important to note also that allocation of units does not guarantee the final approval of a project, nor does it endorse any project. Alls it does, it allows the applicant to formally proceed with the filing of the application for development review process. Shown here in this image is an aerial perspective of the subject site. Again, the project boundaries are shown in red. The green line is the specific plan boundary, which you'll note does traverse the project site. To the bottom portion of the site is Thousand Oaks Boulevard again, and to the east is Caneo School Road. Shown in the aerial, across the street to the south is the Lake Shopping Center, and where we are, the Civic Arts Plaza is shown to the southwest. Immediately adjacent to the west is a senior living facility with its open space area to the front, shown here. And behind it is an existing apartment complex. And behind to the north of this area is an approved apartment complex, the terminus of Chiquita Lane and Caneo School Road. This photo is a vantage point of the project site, pretty much the westerly portion of the mixed-use portion of the development. Shown in this image is an existing two-story office building. Behind it, you can see the roof of the atrium senior living facility. And just immediately on the right is a one-story office complex. This photograph is taken from Caneo School Road, looking southwesterly through the site. To the front is the location of where the proposed townhome units will be situated. Through the site is where the mixed-use development would be, in this general area here. The overall design concept is laid out to provide a strong visual connection from the project site to the lakes and the Civic Arts Plaza, as demonstrated here. And this project would create synergy between the north and the south side of the Boulevard, providing a number of residents in the general area with a pedestrian connection from the south side of the Boulevard to the north side, and vice versa. Residents of the proposed concept could utilize the Lake Shopping Center, as well as the facilities here at the Civic Arts Plaza. This vantage point is also taken from essentially where the second floor would be of the proposed concept, the commercial tenant space. This is the second floor of the existing commercial tenant building. Looking southwesterly, Civic Arts Plaza is in the background. The Lake Shopping Center is shown in this area. There's an existing sound wall along the 101, which will subdue some of the noise from the 101 freeway. And beyond that is an open space area which is owned by the City of Thousand Oaks. The project itself is essentially two developments that are connected. To the front is the mixed-use portion of the development, which contains 77 apartments, most of which are studio and one-bedroom units. There's also about 11,000 square feet of commercial, retail, and restaurant space on both the first and the second floor along Thousand Oaks Boulevard. And parking for this area is provided underneath the commercial and residential areas. The back portion of the development includes three townhome buildings, each containing seven townhome units. This is accessed and fronting on Caneo School Road. The townhome buildings would share recreational amenities with the mixed-use project, but would also have its own recreational amenities. And parking for the townhomes is self-contained in parking garages at the ground level. This image is of the site plan concept, as shown here. To the west is the senior living facility. It's open space to the front, with the mixed-use project shown in the middle here, and the townhomes over to the northwest, easterly portion of the site. The mixed-use building itself is U-shaped, as shown here. It goes from west to east, and then back up to the north, and then back towards the west, with the recreational amenities shown in between. As noted from this image, the area underneath these red awnings is public exterior space, which is to the front of the mixed-use development. And also shown are pedestrian access points to the site, in this area here, also through a lobby in this area, and again, over in this area. Access to the subterranean parking is shown in this area. The second part is the townhome development, and that contains three buildings, all of which are shown in this area. This is its private recreational area. This is a perspective looking from the interior of the townhome development in northeast direction, provides the recreational amenities, and it also provides some scale to an approved apartment complex, which is sort of ghosted in this location here. And it shows that the scale of these buildings are approximately the same height, at least. The project is proposing about 3,000 square feet of public exterior space, which represents about 8% of the mixed-use building footprint. The downtown specific plan requires a minimum of 3%. This is located at the back of sidewalk on Thousand Oaks Boulevard and between the mixed-use building. Due to the elevation changes from Thousand Oaks Boulevard back, that the terraces to the front of the building are elevated. This is a perspective of the front elevation of the mixed-use building, as shown in this image. This sidewalk here is approximately 12 feet. It traverses upward to the public exterior space, which is about another additional eight feet to the front of the building. As you'll note, in this elevation, there's large-volume windows, well-illuminated, with varying, various architectural elements, both horizontally and vertically, and different use of materials provide visual interest. Through this area is a pedestrian connection going through into the lobby. The downtown specific plan allows for maximum height of 50 feet for buildings within this area, and the overall height for the mixed-use building is 49 and a half feet at the westerly extent. The townhome buildings have an overall height of 39 feet. So the average height would be well below the 50-foot maximum provided by the specific plan. As a matter of reference, the senior living facility adjacent to the west of the mixed-use building is approximately the same height as the proposed concept. And the townhome buildings located to the northwest, northeast portion of the site is at about the same level as the approved apartments that are not yet been constructed. The maximum stories, in accordance with the specific plan, is three, unless otherwise approved by the Planning Commissioner of City Council. As mentioned, this design does include four-story elements at the mixed-use portion of the building at the westerly extent. However, most of this building is three stories. The townhome development also includes four stories. It's three residential units above, parking below. And the parking is partially subterranean, so the visual impact is essentially three and a half exposed stories. Again, this is an image of the site plan. This image is intended to demonstrate the area of fourth-story elements proposed for this project. Shown in this rectangle, this portion of the westerly extent of the mixed-use project is a four-story element, with the rest of the U being three stories. And each of the townhome units contain a four-story element, but again, it's visually three and a half stories. Staff supports consideration of the four-story elements, since the overall building envelope will remain with, under the 50-foot maximum height average, that there would be no change in the massing and no change in the height, also due to the fact that the fourth-story footprint is well below the balance of the footprint for the rest of the buildings. And that the fourth floor of the mixed-use in particular is set back 21 feet from the first-floor facade, which provides visual interest and breaks up the massing from streetscape perspective. Also important to note is that the fourth floor for the commercial is a result of introducing a second-floor commercial element, which is a desired concept in the downtown specific plan. This perspective is from Thousand Oaks Boulevard, looking at the front elevation of the mixed-use project. Shown to the left side of the image is the open space of the senior living area. Just between that and the building is a pedestrian corridor accessing the interior of the site. The stairs shown to the front of the project access the public exterior space. A recessed outdoor dining area is shown in this area. Immediately above is the second-floor outdoor dining area. And then along the frontage is all first-floor commercial to this point, shown here to the last awning, with second-floor commercial above, and then third-floor residential, which comes westerly, and then a series of fourth-floor residential, which also continues to this tower element designed for the stairwell. You'll note the architectural material change from the first-floor commercial and the second-floor, third-floor residential. That is a desired element in the specific plan, which encourages the use of different materials between the commercial and residential components of a project. This is also a vantage point of the mixed-use project. Shown here is the, is a pedestrian corridor going into the site, which tracks back to the townhomes in the rear. Access to the subterranean parking is shown here. Public sidewalk in the front with stairwell access to the public exterior space. And commercial retail is shown in this area here. And what's important to note about this commercial retail space is that this is all large-volume area. This does not contain a second floor. This is one floor, with the second floor residential above, third floor residential above that. This provides a perspective of the proposed or contemplated townhome project. To the left side of the image is a pedestrian corridor access point. The townhome area shown here, this is partially subterranean garage with three floors of residential above. You know, in the articulation, they provided vertical and horizontal elements to break up the massing and use different building materials to soften the visual impact. Between the two buildings is a vehicular access point, shown here. And the overall elevation at this point is approximately 39 feet at this corner, with this corner at approximately 37 feet. The proposal also requests a density bonus by providing five very low-income units, per state law. That allows for a 20% increase above the maximum density. In this case, that would be 16 units. These 16 units are not counted towards Measure E, since they are above the, and above the general plan capacity, which is the measurement for Measure E. Therefore, 98 total units are proposed for the project site. 16 density bonus units and 82 units allocated from the Measure E bank are necessary. If allocation is granted, a total of 124 units would remain in the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Measure E bank. The concept would also require initiation of a general plan amendment, which is needed to convert the mobile home parcel from mobile home exclusive to commercial residential to accommodate those townhome units. And then the project would subsequently be proposed to be annexed into the Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan area. In order to begin the process of the general plan, initiation by City Council must be authorized. This is a section of the land use element of the general plan for the subject area. Again, shown, the green line is the Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan boundary. The blue line is the boundary of the project site. And the area shown in magenta is the area that's outside the specific plan, and also the area for conversion from mobile home exclusive to commercial residential, which would be consistent with the designation for the parcels within the Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan area. Additionally, as part of the request, the applicant has requested concurrent processing of the entitlements with any legislative action. If this is granted, this would allow the Planning Commission and City Council to review the entire project in its entirety, so all the applications that are required would come before both the Commission and City Council at the same time. City Council authorization of concurrent processing is required, though. From a procedural standpoint, if the allocation is granted, the applicant would then be authorized to file, authorized to file the necessary entitlement application. Those would be reviewed by staff, and the downtown core master plan consultants would provide recommendations. Subsequently, an environmental analysis of the project would be performed, which would determine what environmental impacts the project site may have, and thereby determine the environmental document that needs to be prepared. The entitlements will be then presented to the Planning Commission at a public hearing, and the Planning Commission would then make a recommendation to City Council. Staff would then present that recommendation to City Council for final action on the project. This proposed concept meets several, several goals of the Development Strategic Plan that was presented recently to City Council. And I'll read them one by one. They would enhance the major thoroughfares and commercial/entertainment districts to create vibrant, environmentally sustainable, and pedestrian-oriented neighborhoods. The project would deliver marketdestination-based activities and public amenities that attract businesses, customers, and visitors. And it would create neighborhoods which attract younger residents while maintaining the unique character of our single-family neighborhoods. Staff believes the project does hit on each one of these goals. Staff is therefore recommending that City Council allocate the 82 requested units to the project site, and subject the application, applicant to filing the formal applications within a 12-month period. If the allocation is granted, staff recommends that City Council also initiate the general plan amendment to change the designation of the mobile home site from mobile home exclusive to commercial residential, and that City Council also allow concurrent processing of the legislative actions and the entitlements. This concludes staff's introduction, and staff is available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kearns, for your detailed presentation of our second pre-screening. We will hear from the applicant in just a moment. I wanted to find out first whether councilmembers have any questions? No, I do have questions. Mr. Towne, is five low-income units the minimum in order to receive a 20% density bonus from the state?
That is correct. That's the, by providing that number of units at that income level, one is entitled to 20% density bonus. So the number of density bonus units is a function of the number of affordable units and the income level of those units. So that is the minimum amount.
It is a minimum.
Correct. If one were to provide more than that, the maximum is 35% density bonus.
Okay. And since this is conceptual still, I wanted to find out how many units there are on the upper floor, the fourth floor?
At the mixed-use portion of the project, there are six apartment units at the fourth level, and the townhomes have a total of nine units.
Okay. Thank you. We will call the applicant, Mr. Vince Daly, first, and you have 15 minutes. If you'd like to use that time, you can. If you don't, that's fine, too, followed by, let me find out, Mr. Muradian, a Muradian? And not sure if Mike Tingas is part of your group as well?
Not directly.
No? Okay, very good. Good evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. I don't think we need the 15-minute staff. Did a very excellent job. Want to thank them for a very detailed report tonight. We really just want to introduce who we are, but before that, we're just excited to be here, because I live in the City of Thousand Oaks, have for quite a while, raised my four kids here, and probably as excited as just most here to see the Boulevard, some activity. So we're really excited to be part of a plan that the City Council has laid out, especially this council is really focused on, so it really makes it quite a bit easier for us to follow in those footsteps. So thank you, guys, for clearing the way for that. We have worked on a project, our same group, which was, is called Lupe's. We're going to call it something else at some point. But again, that was part of your plan, and thank you, guys, for that vision. So it does make it easier for us to have a framework to work into, and it allows us to really stay focused on high-quality design when you already have worked on a lot of the details as far as the requirements and the parking and some of the stuff that, you know, you have to kind of invent. So my name's Vince Daly. I live in Caneo Oaks here. I've got four kids. I've raised them all here, still raising my daughter. Lou and Gary are my partners, Lou Melman, Gary Collette. And between us, we have about 7,000 apartments that we own. I think the importance here is we only have 36 in town, so that's not a lot. But one of the neat things, and what we get to do, is sort of create these legacy pieces that we are a little unusual, because we entitle our own projects, we manage the architects all the way through, engineers, we actually do the construction ourselves, and then we own the buildings. So this is one that we really are going to be vested in, just like the Lupe's, and excited to do that. In fact, this particular piece of land, after our experience with the Lupe's project, went very well, and we actively looked for property within, internally, we call it the sweet spot, but you call it the core or the central area. And it wasn't easy to find. A lot, you know- A lot, you know, we found Lupe's. It was a restaurant that was struggling a little bit and we were able to reuse that. But there are properties now that have tenants and renters in it, so it was a little more challenging. But we did know one thing. We did know that you guys really wanted something, a space, something that really activated the downtown. And we kind of started backwards on this piece of property. We knew that we needed to find that something special. We definitely were watching the other hearings on the allotment and we really knew the bar was set high. I think somebody said these are sort of like gold coins that you're giving out. So we really worked backwards. So we worked really hard along the Boulevard and the site slopes. It was a little challenging, but one of the interesting things, and I think it was really brought up by my wife, we walk over the hill and go to Lassens a lot. And I'd sucker her into going on the property for a few times and then she got wise to it. But when you stand up higher on the parking lot, it really has a great view. And that visual connection that you guys talk about a lot, it's just there. And we really wanted to sort of elevate something and really get that visual view, looking at the beautiful lakes, looking at the performing arts center and all the beautiful oak trees and the open space and at night, looking at the sunsets. It's just a really spectacular area. So we designed that by elevating our, what do we call it? A linear promenade is what we're calling it. And we elevated this linear promenade and because the site slopes, we were able to get these multi-terrace promenades. And then that started working really well because we wanted to focus on restaurant and entertainment. And that gave everybody that might be in the commercial area, we have about 11,000, 12,000 square feet, gave everybody kind of their own little space where they can have their own little, you know, bistro sitting area. You know, it kind of worked. So that was exciting. And then we had to work backwards from there. And then we sort of used the slope and we used high ceilings for the bottom floor in the commercial. And that's really cool. But then the architectural team pointed out and said, Vince, I think we can get another floor on the downward side, a full floor of commercial. And then when we started thinking about that, and we know that, you know, there's height in the stories and we were getting a little tripped up with some of that, we just kept going on it. And we found this about 5,000-square-foot space that we ended up putting up on that second floor, and half of it. And we ended up with a open terrace. And it ended up where the elevator, and that's kind of a new thing for Thousand Oaks in a residential mixed-use project, an elevator going up to that second floor where it goes right to that really interesting restaurant space with deck views and patio views. So that can be a neat entertainment space, a neat restaurant space. Then we paused and said, okay, we have to make this project work. So we had to look at the mixed-use. And we're a true mixed-use project, one project is the way we look at it. We have commercial, which is going to focus on restaurant entertainment. Then we have residential, which we started with, the apartments. It's the rental housing. And we started stacking those and blocking those in there. We were able to tuck the parking underneath so you wouldn't be able to see a big parking lot. So we started working on that and terracing it so people would have nice views. We started working on the amenities, you know, resort-style pool, a gym where you can get a real workout in so that people don't have to have gym memberships and maybe really focused on that component, the high amenities. Then we worked our way to the for-sale stacked flats. And the stacked flats ended up working out very well. That's on the former, the current mobile home park site. And that is a different type of product where you actually have an elevator that goes up to six buildings, six units, and they're all stacked flats. So it's a really good project. So in that respect, we really think it's mixed-use. It's offering a lot to a lot of different folks. And so when you, a lot of people ask, who's the demographic? And it's, you know, my answer is it's everybody. But, you know, to be more specific, you know, the for-rent units are, we have the majority of our one-bedrooms. We have two-bedrooms. We have some studios. And it really has a sort of a loft kind of feel, a vibe. I have two kids that went to high school here, graduated college, came home. We've converted their rooms since. That's a strategy that my wife and I are trying to use, but it doesn't work. They still moved back. God bless them. And so they were looking for places to stay. And they actually, one of my sons was living behind Lupe's and he had a few friends. And they loved the fact they could walk to restaurants, walk to bars. And I will tell you this, the millennials, that's what they're called, they don't cook. They spend money on eating out and doing things. And that, I showed this project to both of my sons and they said, Dad, this is cool. I said, good, you don't need to move back home then, you can live on Thousand Oaks Boulevard. But there's a little focus on that. But it can be, again, it's for everybody. The stacked flats, those are, you know, they're for everybody who I think will be in those or who we think. We think they're going to be people that want to stay in Thousand Oaks. They have these big houses. They don't have kids in them anymore. We know where those are and we love our community because of all those big houses. But maybe, you know, we should leave those houses for some of the younger families to move into and then maybe some of us can move into the stacked flats, kind of age-in place, but also be close to downtown and have a home base to travel from, do some other things. We think that is really exciting. What we did from there, and actually it was, Toba pushed us a little bit on this. They wanted more connectivity. So we actually are going to have a program where the townhouse, where they're stacked flats, we call them townhouses, because I consider it like a town and country kind of a vibe. They're actually going to have a membership to the other part of the project. So they'll be able to use the pool, they'll be able to use the gym, they'll be able to actually enter off Teo Boulevard, take the elevator up to the deck, walk through the project all, you know, privately in their own area and into their unit. So it's really, really a mixed-use one project. We really focused on making it one project, but a mixed-use for rent, for sale, commercial opportunities as well. So that's probably the bigger vision of it. I think the architectural design just kind of came out because it just morphed and it got exciting as we started looking at this brick and looking at this sort of loft kind of a style. I really liked the lakes, but I didn't want to be like the lakes. And so we kind of really worked a lot of hours on the architectural, a lot of discussion on the quality of that architectural. Wanted it to be different. We didn't want it just to look like just any old place. We wanted other cities to be a little jealous of what we're doing here. The, there's a ton of other things to say. There's new things for Thousand Oaks. There's rooftop decks, which we don't see in Thousand Oaks. There's elevators, which we don't see in Thousand Oaks. But we really believe that we're doing this tastefully. We really believe we're doing this where it fits into context. Luckily, there are some taller buildings in and around us. And because of the slope, it actually sort of works that way where it's not just sticking up out of context. So the site sort of worked for that kind of development to fit what we're doing on the project. I think this, again, I'll just end with the fact that you guys have done a great job on creating that vision. This obviously isn't easy work. We spent a lot of hours. One of the main things was that it was, we really focused on quality. We focused on creating a true mixed-use project that could be available for everybody and really trying to create a catalyst project. We hope other people come to this area because that's what, we really think the vibrancy is really the thing that's going to help all the, this entire block just become alive. So we're here to answer questions. My architectural team's here. I'm here. My partners are here. And thank you very much for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Daly. Don't leave just yet because we do have a question for you from council member Al Adam.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Hi, Mr. Daly.
How are you?
Hey, well, thank you for being here tonight and thank you for the work that you've put in to this project so far. Even so, you're still at the pre-application level. And I know you put many, many hours into this project, which is probably going to be one of the most scrutinized projects in the history of Thousand Oaks. I mean, as you mentioned, the Boulevard Association's looked at it. Ramian Associates, our consultants are looking at it. The staff is looking at it. The council is in the pre-stage with you right now. You'll go back to staff again, then the planning commission and finally get back to us. So by the time, you know, you're back to us again, this thing will be looked at upside down and sideways. So appreciate your patience and the work you've done on it so far. And I do think you get what we're trying to do. Being a longtime resident of Thousand Oaks, I think you understand and I appreciate the way you called it a legacy project for you and your group. And I think you understand what we're trying to do, a destination. We want housing for young people. We want a destination for our residents and I think you understand that. What I'd like to do, if I may, and I hope some of my other council members will chime in after listening to your presentation and reading the, you know, the project and its different parameters, if I may just add maybe a punch list to that for you?
Absolutely.
Kind of simple stuff, but, you know, we're really attuned to public space. It's very important to the council that this becomes a walkable, pedestrian-friendly area. And the piece that you're working on is an essential piece to that. So I would say upfront, you've got about 8% in public space. Enhance that as best you can. Fire pits, seating, whatever it takes to get people out on the boulevard because people attract people. And I wouldn't even mind seeing a little bit more than 8%, to be honest with you. Number two, on the Canoe School side of the project, take a look at maybe trying to get some pedestrian-friendly amenities there as well. Granted, it's not on the Boulevard and I understand there's no retail on that side, but Canoe School will connect to the neighborhoods beyond. And I'd like to see some attraction to pull people down. And if you had some seating there, whatever, I'm not exactly sure what, you can work on that. But I'd like to see a little bit of that as well. Continue to try to purchase the corner piece if you possibly can. It's not a make or break it, but it would add a lot to the project. I think you know that. I know there's some economic realities you've got to face with that, but please continue that. And just, you mentioned the lakes. And I see what you're saying about the view from your project to the lakes. It's going to be, it would be spectacular, really, especially at night with the lighting. You'd see the Pacific Arts Plaza, you'd see the lakes. Work on connectivity with that project. Give people a reason to cross the street to go to your project from the lakes. We want to see pedestrian movement back and forth. So make it a priority to make sure that people want to come across the street to your project and vice versa. I'm sure they're going to go from your project to the other side, but I'd like to see that kind of connectivity. It's a very significant piece, as you yourself stated. It's kind of an anchor piece, right in the core of our downtown and this is what we're focused on. So if you would take those suggestions to heart, I'd appreciate it very much. And again, thank you for all the work that you've done on this project so far.
Thank you, council member. We'll definitely be looking at those things.
I, thank you, Mr. Adam. Mr. Daly, while I still have you up here, we do have some speakers, but I wanted to get certain questions still answered. If you were not, if you weren't to build five low-income units, you wouldn't get the additional 16 units. So that would lower one floor. Could you still move forward with the project?
We use the word legacy projects when they don't, when they're on the bubble. That means we're hoping that it's, everybody, it's going to get where it needs to get to. So we're underwriting this a little aggressively, very aggressively, because we're looking at it to be a legacy project. We do need what we're asking for to make it economically work.
The reason I'm asking is because five units is the minimum. And we hear constantly that we need to provide more housing and affordable housing. All of these will be market rate. The two bedrooms will probably go for close to $3,000. I'm not sure which millennials can afford that, but somebody will be able to afford that. So for me personally, as I look at this, I congratulate you on inclusionary housing, the very low-income units. I'm not sure whether those units are enough. And the reason I'm saying that is because we do need affordable housing, low-income housing. And as you know, the city of Santa Monica now requires developers to build 20% of any proposed projects as low-income units because the state is breathing down our neck. And I'm not sure whether five units can fix that. If I look at the aesthetics of the Boulevard and the intention that we had with the Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan, we said three stories maximum. With four stories, we're kind of changing the DNA of Thousand Oaks, the charm of Thousand Oaks. So if I am going to go to four stories, I would want to see triple the number of low-income units. There has to be a public benefit. And if that isn't possible, then perhaps not have any low-income units at all and just keep it at three stories. So that's something that I would like for you to keep in mind. We do have Mr. Fox now with a question for you.
Thank you. Now, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to, like Mr. Adam and the mayor, I just want to provide some feedback. I certainly share the comments that Mr. Adam and in part what Ms. Bill O'Planey talked about. If there's a way to increase the number of affordable units, we're very interested in that. We can't operate in a vacuum. There's a number of things, I know you're aware, that are going on in Sacramento that are directed towards providing more housing, all housing, but in particular, affordable housing. My own view is if there is that public benefit, then I'm willing to entertain that fourth floor, basically because of what staff said. It's, you know, we're below the 50-feet minimum. And I'm reminded a little bit when Caruso built the promenade, there was a lot of concern about the height of the tower. And now, looking back, that type of architecture clearly adds to the, you know, the architectural design and the pleasantry of that project. And so for me, it's not so much the stories, but the height that we're not creating, you know, a tunnel effect. Some feedback. I clearly think you need to look at the public space like Mr. Adam was talking about and that needs to be increased. For me, the key element is the entertainment, the commercial piece. What I'm concerned about, not just with you, but with others that come, they're building projects that, there certainly would be an incentive that are supported by their residential units and they're good because the project pays for itself, it's supported by your residents or your apartments. That's not what we're looking for. And I am pleased to see that your first floor is actually a two-story element with high ceilings. But I can't emphasize enough, the tenants that you bring in, a, you know, something for entertainment use, that's, from my perspective, that's really the value of your project. I understand you need the apartments to make a pencil out. We also need housing. There's no question about it. I mean, we do need that type of housing. This project, on many levels, meets a number of strategic plans that the council has laid out, namely, developing a viable downtown pedestrian-friendly entertainment district, providing for millennial housing, and at the same time, doing it in an area that keeps the character of Thousand Oaks, the character of the Thousand Oaks, why people moved here, and that's single-family homes. So if we're going to do something like this, this is clearly the place to do it. And really, I can't think of any other place in the city where this would fit. But in order for it to work, that entertainment component has to be a key. As I shared with you when you came to the committee, the vision I believe that everybody's looking for is if you live in Thousand Oaks, but even if you live in Camarillo or Moore Park or Seamee Valley and you're looking for something to do on a Wednesday night in September, somebody says, let's go to the Boulevard and they know exactly what they're talking about. And they come here for entertainment, for restaurants, for some activity, and then they get their car and they go home. So the entertainment piece, the public space piece and the affordability, I think are three key components. I know tonight's just a, you know, I'm certainly going to move forward on the allocation of units. We have to start somewhere. I know you get it. That's the first step. You're going to have to go through the planning commission and then back to the city council. So by no means is this a blessing of your project. This gives you the ticket for you to move forward. And I think it's done in a measured way and I think you and your team did a really good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Daly. I will now call the other speakers here this evening. We have Mr. Sean Maradian. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. Sean Maradian, lifelong resident of Thousand Oaks and I'm the president of the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Association. I want to take a moment and thank staff and the applicant for bringing forward a beautiful presentation and a well-thought-out project. The association outlined their position in the letter submitted that's before you, so we will not reiterate those points, but we do believe that this project does have merit. We acknowledge that this is just a pre-screen process. By no means it is an entitlement or an approval, but we do believe that there's merit, that the units should be allocated to this project and allowed to move forward with a normal entitlement process. entitlement process. I'm available for any questions you may have, and I thank the council for their continued support for the boulevard.
Thank you. Jerry Williams, followed by Chase Rashid. Okay, so no Jerry Williams, then Chase Rashid, followed by Nick Kidway. I'm sorry, followed by Mike Tingas and then Nick Kidway.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council, Chase Rashid, City of Thousand Oaks. Okay, so I think this is a decent project. I think it would add more character to the boulevard and really root out what could be possible decay on the boulevard. But at the same time, I have some concerns about the amount of affordable units. I think it should be 15. And reasonably, I think that would leave the developer enough room to have those market-rate units. That would leave at least 67 market-rate units. Now, if you look at the numbers, this was in the Mercury News, I believe it was today, that 56% of Californians have considered moving. And 67% of millennials have considered moving now. There's no way millennials can afford the market-rate price. There's no way. They have student loan debt. They have jobs that may not be what they really want to do, that may not be geared at their career jobs that they are working until they can get their career off the ground. If you look at the new apartments over on Megan Place, just a couple of blocks down, those are between $2,300 and $2,700. You look around this neighborhood, there are no affordable vacancies. All the vacancies are the apartment complexes that are market rate and very expensive. Now, if the developer is not, does not want to provide more affordable units, I would, I implore the council to at least, for future projects, enforce a stricter guideline for affordable units. Now, we need more workforce housing, we need more senior housing, and possibly even some housing for veterans. One thing I don't want to see is the working class be left out of this vision. There is a working class here. There's a working class in this neighborhood. They need to be included in it. I'd also like to see some small businesses be able to participate in these projects. So remember the working class, don't leave them out. They are a very powerful force, even in this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Tingas, our last speaker, Nick Kidway.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members and staff. Mike Tingas, I've been a resident of the City of Thousand Oaks since 2002. While our company does represent the sellers on the property, I'm here speaking just really on behalf of the housing allocation. I've been doing commercial real estate in the Cano Valley for almost 30 years now. In the last five years, from Lakeview Canyon to the Cano Grade, we've absorbed 2.5 million square feet of buildings, both industrial and office. We currently have over 650,000 square feet under construction out at the Cano Spectrum and a project that we have at the Cano Vista. When you're talking about new millennials, recently, you've probably heard the K-Swiss, which has been a client of ours for almost 30 years, they moved to downtown to the Arts District. And the reason they moved down there is the people there trying to hire all those new millennials and don't believe that they don't have money, because they definitely have money. The apartments down there are incredibly expensive. But just like the folks over here, when we moved east and out here, east and came from Maneyes out here, the employees that they have there are new millennials. They're people doing research and development, design. And these folks like to be in an area where they can go and basically live, shop, be entertained. I was just looking at the new speaker series we have here. I mean, imagine the vibrancy if you have, you know, a lot of units on the boulevard where people can come, live, shop, be entertained, come to, obviously, to great civic events. So I'm not going to comment on the project. I think it's a good-looking project, but I think you really need to think about just the amount of square footage we've absorbed, companies we've brought here, and trying to provide housing, you know, for as many people, whether it's the flats. I've got a lot of clients that are seniors that still are very active, but can't go up and downstairs anymore. So I think flats is a great idea for those seniors that are still very active. We know many people that, you know, live over in the lake and homes that don't have the ability to have the, you know, the mobility that they once had. So I just would encourage the council, you know, to really look, you know, not just at this project, but at future projects, and how are we going to be able to provide, you know, housing, both affordable and market rate, to accommodate the demands that our business community is really, is driving. Thank you.
I begin in the name of God, who's most beneficial, most merciful. My name is Nick Egbarkidway. I'm a resident since 1979 and director of concern, citizen of Thousand Oaks. For the record, I have said that I am for mixed use. And I and a lot of the other citizens do appreciate the applicant making a good effort to come up with a great project. But in my humble opinion, it does not meet what we should really get. If you can show the first picture, because I have limited time, this is an ugly mixed use in Pasadena that is under construction, I believe. This one, this second picture, I saw it being built because I used to go to Pasadena, and it's at the corner of Lake and Green, I believe, just before Colorado. The picture did not come out good. I'm having trouble with the printer. But it has four levels of housing and excellent retail at the bottom. I think the American Express has an office there already. What is wrong with this project, in my opinion, is one, that it's too busy. You know, that's the American term, that when you draw something or even talk and cover too many bases, it's too busy. And that's the, you don't want that, that look. And that's because the applicant has tried super hard to try to meet all the various positions of the different council members and meet the specific plan also. Do appreciate that they have a pool there and other amenities. So this project is much better, much better than the loop is. And what has, it's unbelievable, you are saving paper or ink. Maybe I can borrow some of the ink, as you can see my printing is so bad. The packet is 28 pages for this project and four pages for the next one. I thought the pages were stolen or something. So it's good that there's not a lot of red tape, but you know, the, some of the issues have not been discussed. One is, I don't think it's a balanced project because you have to go up. How many trucksloads will be exported? And two important issues, one, we had an earthquake again in Mexico today. Please elaborate as to what precautions you're taking, especially when there's a subterranean floor, that, that it can survive, a big one. And my favorite subject, it's not mine, but other people's, what about the water? I mean, we have a severe water shortage and building more. How will you tackle that? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Kidway was the last speaker, so we can go back to council. Any questions for staff or Mr. Daley and his team while they're still here? Mr. Price.
Thank you. I did have just a couple of questions, and I know, Mr. Kearns, you answered this during your presentation, but I've forgotten. The average height of the atria complex, did you give us that? Or I know you pointed to it, said you can see it behind there in the renderings.
Yeah, it was made part of the presentation. I didn't call out the height of it. The actual height is about 35 feet, but it's at a higher elevation. So the roof lines will pretty much match up between the mixed-use project and the existing atria development.
Okay, very good. And the average height of the approved apartment complex, I think you said that too. You said that was 37?
That is actually 35 as well.
35.
Yeah, but, and again, that sits at a higher elevation, by about two feet higher than the townhome to the north, the furthest to the north townhome building.
So visually, standing on a boulevard or even on this side of the boulevard, looking in that direction, those will appear higher than this project? Is that right?
As it stands now, yeah. This project will box some of the visibility to those townhomes or apartments beyond.
Right, but because of the slope, they'll appear.
Right.
Thank you.
Mr. McCoy.
A question on the five affordable units. Are they one-bedroom or are they studio or two-bedroom?
Those haven't been determined at this point. State law requires an appropriate mix in various locations for those units. So if this project, the allocation is granted, we will vet that through the process and determine the location and the type.
Thank you.
I wanted to find out if, how many mobile units there are, mobile home units are there on the parcel currently, the lake site?
Our records show that there are five existing tenants on site.
Okay, thank you. When will, when would traffic be studied as, as part of this project?
At traffic evaluation, traffic studies will be performed as part of the entitlement process. So at this point, we haven't had the project submitted, so the full review hasn't been performed.
Correct.
So the traffic evaluation will be performed as part of the entitlement process and as well as part of the environmental analysis.
When staff went through the pre-application process with the applicant, did you consider
We didn't talk about that in, in any detail with the applicant, in part because the, the project is designed, from staff's perspective, to provide opportunities for different generations, for millennials in terms of the studios and one-bedroom units, and in terms of, as the applicant had described it to us, sort of downsizing property owners that would want to live in those townhome units and be closer to the arts and entertainment center of Thousand Oaks. So because the project was looking at providing different housing types, we thought that was, that was not a key issue on this proposal.
Not on this one. Okay. I'm told that Mr. Fox would like to make a motion. Thank you.
Was that it? Is that all the questions? Are we good? Okay, sure. I'm going to move the staff recommendation to allocate 82 units from the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Specific Plan, Missouri Bank, subject to submitting a formal application within 12 months. And also that city council allocate units, and then staff further recommends the council authorize the initiation of general plan amendment to change the area currently located outside the specific plan area from mobile home exclusive to commercial residential. And number two, authorize concurrent processing of the entitlements of the legislative requests. Let me just first comment about our process. I think this pre-screening process is going to serve us well, and council was wise in going in this direction. It gives, first of all, the community a flavor of what it is that's being proposed. Council provides important feedback to the builder, which, as we all know, is a little late in the game when they come, you know, even for concurrent processing. So I think our, and council gets an idea of what's in front of us. You know, we had another application where council didn't feel like that was, hit the mark, and at least initially, this one does. So I think our process is going to serve us well, because I think we're, as we move forward through the year, we're going to have other applications. So I think we should feel confident that this process is at least working. How it turns out, you know, we'll see. Specifically to this, it's just the first step. As you guys know, you're going to now go through the whole staff review, an entire planning commission review, and then ultimately, you're going to come back to the council. I would pay particular attention to the comments from the council. I can tell you, we don't make these comments lightly, and they're important to all of us. And if you expect to receive approval somewhere down the road, some combination of the things that we listed should probably show up in your final project. If you come with this project exactly as proposed, I think you're rolling the dice. We, we clearly need to see more public benefit. It's really incumbent upon you and that entertainment aspect of it and the affordability. Those three things, I think, came out along with some of the design issues. That being said, you guys presented a quality project. You should be proud of it. I noted in the speaker, in the written statement cards, I didn't see a single opposition. It was over 20 statement cards that were in favor. They said the project, but basically, we're just getting started. And I think this clearly falls in line with what we talked about last week with the Economic Development Plan, with what's going on with the state with respect to our clear need for housing and millennial housing. And then finally, really starting to build a downtown entertainment center while keeping the quality of our, and the character of our community, which is a bedroom community and no one's interested in changing that, just as it is. So if you want that activity, you drive down to the Civic Arts Plaza, the downtown area. If you're not interested in it, you stay in your nice, quiet neighborhood. But I do congratulate you guys for a, a nice presentation, and I would move for approval. Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Mr. Adam.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, it is a rigorous process, and so it should be, because this is a very critical piece in our downtown master plan. So, you know, this city's 56 square miles. We have the lowest population per square mile of any city in Ventura County. So we will retain the character of the city, because what we're talking about here is less than 1% of the overall city. So we'll retain the character, but we'll also hopefully create a downtown that you can visit and live in. If I may, just two quick, little short stories about the demand that we've seen for this. I can't tell you how many businesses have approached me and other council members. California Lutheran, Infai, Cirrus, Amgen, the list goes on and on. In fact, Councilmember Price and myself visited Amgen a year or two ago, and he was mayor at the time. Talked to him about their commitment to Thousand Oaks, which is strong. And just as we were ready to leave, we said, if there's one thing you'd like to see us do for you, what would it be? We were meeting with four of the big wigs. They all said in unison, build us a downtown. Build us a downtown. So that's what we're putting you, giving you charge to help us do. So it's very important. One other observation about housing, the Rancho Cano Center's undergoing a renaissance. There's, let me get the numbers right here. There's 25 new buildings that are going to go up in the near future. It's 1.3 million square feet of commercial and industrial space. It will, already, Atara is there, a biotech company. They've got 50 employees, they want to go to a couple hundred. This could employ as many as 1,500 people in that area. And there are going to be high-tech jobs, biotech jobs, there's a possible defense contractor they might be interested in. So these are going, they're going to need young professionals, and these professionals are going to need somewhere to live. And I don't want to see them having to go to Santa Monica or Ventura or somewhere else and clog on the freeways and creating all the commuting problems that we have. I'd like to see them stay right here in Thousand Oaks, and this is a start. This would be a start to fulfill that housing need. And they're going to want more than just housing, they're going to want some entertainment, as Mr. Fox said. They're going to want a place to recreate, and that's what we hope this downtown will do. So it's just critical that this thing gets done right. You know, we need to attract the younger generation here at Thousand Oaks. We're an aging community, we're about 30% seniors now, and that number's rising. That's fine, we're going to take care of our seniors, but we've got to bring in the young people as well. And we're, we're a little low on the millennials. I know the name's overused, but, but we need to bring in young people because that will be the generation that sustains this city for the long be the generation that sustains this city for the long term. And we're hoping that this downtown is a start with that. So with that, I certainly support Mr. Fox's motion. And again, appreciate you going through this rigorous process, but it's going to be good in the end, because we're going to end up with a really good project, I think.
Thank you, Mr. Adam. Mr. Price?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to congratulate your group for not only the presentation that you made tonight, but the quality project that you're already pushing around dirt on and developing in our city. I also want to echo some of Val's comments about the businesses that, not only the ones that are here now, but those that we have heard are interested in coming to Thousand Oaks. Mr. Tingas, thank you for your comments about those businesses that you've been involved in and are aware of. We heard the same thing from some of the folks at Amgen, that they have a hard time attracting talent here, because there was nowhere for their well-paid employees to live. So this is the kind of housing that, and the businesses, they will occupy and frequent. So I will certainly be in support of the allocation here, and I look forward to hearing more from you down the road. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Price. The comments I would like to make before we vote on this is, again, to reiterate some of the punch list items, as Mr. Adams said. I didn't call my concerns punch list items, but they are serious concerns nonetheless. I appreciate the design, I appreciate the hard work you have put into this thus far. As a resident of Thousand Oaks, I know you take pride in your projects, and we really appreciate that. In order to comply with state laws on housing, in order to provide enough housing, not only for millennials, but for others as well, it is utterly important that we provide more than five low-income units. The golden coin, we call, we call the golden ticket, and there are just a few of those golden tickets left, and you're getting a bunch of them tonight. Use them very wisely, because as Mr. Fox said, the project as it stands today, tonight, if it comes back in the same form, I'm not going to be able to support it. Mr. Fox, maker of the motion, you have last word?
No, Madam Mayor, that's good.
Please vote. The motion carries five-zero. Thank you very much, congratulations. Next item, California American Water Company. And while the Sure Forum clears out, we will have a staff change to present the latest update on our battle with California American Water Company. A battle over water rates. Okay. Presentation will be made by our Public Works Director, Jay Spurgeon. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. With me on the dais this evening is Assistant City Attorney Felicia Lieberman, who's been a key member of our team as we have worked through this rate case. We've also had a lot of help from outside counsel, Dan Carroll of Downey Brand Attorneys out of Sacramento. Tonight, this is an update on the rate case. We are also going to introduce a new webpage that we have built to assist residents and businesses who may want to submit comments to the Public Utilities Commission. That webpage is www.t-oaks.org/calamwater. And I'll cover a little more detail about that at the end. You may recall that the city is served water by three different purveyors. California American Water Company, their service area is shown here, kind of in the orange, western part of the city. In blue is the city service area, roughly in the center. And tan is California Water Service Company, which serves the eastern part, Thousand Oaks. CalAM, with almost twenty-one thousand customers, is the largest of the three purveyors, serving about forty-six percent of the city. And you can see how the other two break down here in this table. So the water rate setting process is quite different for public agencies such as the city.
Mr. Spurgeon, if I may interrupt you, could you speak a little bit closer to the microphone? Thank you.
My pleasure, Madam Mayor. Thank you. So the city, the city sets its rates in compliance with Proposition 218, which is, of course, a California constitutional amendment, that requires the city to set its rates such that they match the actual cost of providing water service. There is a ballot protest process that is part of the Prop. 218 procedures. And in fact, at the next meeting next week, the city will be holding its public hearing on its proposed rates for the coming two years, including a report on the ballot protest, ballot protests that may have been received. CalAM and other private water companies are governed in their rate-setting process by the California Public Utility Commission. They are not subject to Prop. 218, and the rules and guidelines for that are set by the PUC. Last year, in July, CalAM did file an application for rates starting in 2018. CalAM and CalWater go through this process every three years, and they're actually staggered. Cal Water Service Company finished its rate case last year. This time, CalAM did propose something quite different than in the past, and that is, it proposed to consolidate five districts in the Southern California area for ratemaking purposes. Those five districts are listed here in the left-hand column of this table, and they include, of course, Thousand Oaks, three different communities in Los Angeles County, as you can see there, and the city Coronado in San Diego County. The proposal for consolidation included the impacts to customers' bills, and this table shows what those impacts would be. This is for single-family residential customers, average, using an average amount of water in each of the five districts. Those average usage levels are different, depending on which district you look at. And those were compared as part of their original application to what the rate impacts would be if there was not consolidation, or the standalone column that's shown in this table here. For the city of Thousand Oaks, CalAM customers, you can see that the three-year increase with consolidation would be thirty-two percent, standalone would be fifteen percent, less than half of that. The other four districts, you can see, vary quite significantly, both with consolidation and standalone. But you'll note that all four of them, the with consolidation rate impacts are less than standalone. Thousand Oaks is the only one of the five where the with consolidation rate impacts are actually greater than standalone. Now, I would point out that these are rate impacts that do not include the pass-through of imported water cost increases, which average about an additional three percent per year. So you really have to add nine percent, more or less, to all of these numbers, certainly for Thousand Oaks, and to get the full impact of what the proposed rate impacts would be. Now, the conclusion from this is that Thousand Oaks customers, residents and businesses in the CalAM service area are subsidizing the costs in the other four districts. There's really no other conclusion you can reach from this. And we believe that this proposal places an unfair burden on the residents and businesses in Thousand Oaks as compared to the other districts. And that's really the essence of the city's opposition to this proposal by CalAM to consolidate and result in these rate impacts. We believe that in Thousand Oaks, the three different water purveyors, because they are so similar in the cost and the source of imported water that we all buy, that we all have very similar distribution systems of about the same age, and therefore, operating and capital costs really should be about the same, proportionately so, of course, and therefore, water customers' bills should be similar from one service area to the other. I would note here that the city and CalWater service area, again, the other private water purveyor in the city, have proposed and/or have had approved rate increases for the next two to three years at only one percent per year. Historically, the three water purveyors, costs in the three water purveyors areas, the rates have been very similar. When CalAM filed their application in 2016, you can see that the average residential monthly cost for water was about the same. In fact, CalAM and the cities were exactly the same at that time, and CalWater was a little bit higher. When you look at what next year's cost would be with consolidation, you can see that, again, CalAM is, would be significantly higher. What's at stake here is that the residents and, the residents in the CalAM service area would be paying collectively, cumulatively, four million dollars more per year under the consolidation set of rates as compared to standalone. During this rate case, CalAM did reach out to the city, and we, for a number of weeks, discussed settlement. That's oftentimes, the way these rate cases end up is that they're settled between the parties. The city is a party to this rate case, as well as the County of LA, as well as others. But unfortunately, the city and CalAM were unable to reach a settlement in the case. CalAM and the city Coronado, however, did reach a settlement, and they filed that last month. That settlement agreement included agreement on several areas, including infrastructure, and you can see several different elements of infrastructure, both throughout Southern California and specifically for the city Coronado, as well as consolidation for the entire Southern California area, as well as a new rate design, which, in my opinion, oddly enough, results in a larger increase in rates for customers that use the least amount of water. The city, the Office of Ratepayer Advocates, and the County of Los Angeles all filed comments on this settlement agreement, all in opposition to it in its entirety or to some portions So what's next? The PUC will need to rule on the Coronado settlement, considering the agreement that was filed, as well as comments that have been submitted. Within the coming weeks or months, we're not sure exactly, but the PUC would issue a draft decision on the overall rate case. At that time, the city and others will have an opportunity to comment on that draft decision. And then ultimately, a final decision would be issued by the PUC, probably not until next year, although that's really uncertain at this time. So what can residents do if our city residents and businesses, who are CalAM customers, would like to submit comments to the PUC? It's not too late. We, and to assist them, we have prepared this webpage, again, www.t-oaks.org/calamwater. We have lots of information there, including frequently asked questions, links to all the reports that we have presented to you, council, and documents, including the city's testimony, rebuttal, various comments, and et cetera. So comments can be emailed, that's the best way to send them, to publicadvisor@cpuc.ca.gov. It's very helpful if the rate case number is included in the emails, and that's A dot sixteen dash oh seven dash zero zero two. And residents' comments are very important. The PUC does consider communities' input, and in other cases, it's been a very key factor in how ultimately the PUC will rule on a case. So with that, staff's available for questions. I do believe that, yes, CalAM representatives are here, I believe they have a statement, and I think they're, they would be happy to answer questions as well.
Thank you, Mr. Spurgeon, Mr. Fox.
Thank you, Mr. Spurgeon. I just want to get some clarification. On page two of the staff report, it says CalAM's proposal would increase rates by an average of fourteen percent over, per year, over three years. So are you talking about a forty-five percent, forty-three percent increase for, over three years?
I am there, and in that case, the imported water pass-through increases are included in that. So it's the base thirty-two percent, plus the nine, gives you around forty-one, forty-two, divide by three, that's where the fourteen comes in.
So.
That's an average over three years.
CalAM residents that have that water are looking at almost twice their water bills at the end of three years? Their water bills are almost going to double?
They're going to go up over three years roughly forty-one, forty-two percent under that consolidation proposal.
Right.
Yes.
Do, how many of the folks in the, have we done analysis, the folks that are in the CalAM service area that are in the tier-three water use? Do we know that?
We have the data that we could deduce that. Actually, CalAM has four tiers.
Okay, right.
So who's in their highest tiers?
Right.
Off the top of my head, Councilmember Ryan, I'm sorry, I don't know the breakdown. We do have the, we do have a breakdown of what the various percentages in terms of the actual usage level, but, no, I'm sorry. That's certainly, we can, we can provide that information.
All right. So, and then, I know you went over it, but can you just briefly, for the viewing public, because part of the reason we're doing this is to create an awareness on, is CalAM here? Yeah, on your customers, on what you're getting ready to do to them, and what the city is doing to try to protect those residents against some incredibly high water bills. Just briefly, talk about the PUC hearings, you're going to the city's litigation, some of that, without getting compromise or closed session stuff?
Certainly. So, at your direction, we did hire outside counsel, and there have been, well, to date, we've spent, I think it's in the staff report, over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to get outside counsel, because the process is so complicated and specialized, so it's been very helpful for us. We did obtain party status in the case, which is different than we would typically do. We would be sort of an interested intervener, I think it's called, and, you know, provide comments, and that's what we've done in the past. But this, this time, we knew we needed to dig in because of the magnitude of what we were looking at. So we have submitted testimony, that was done early on, it's significant, I mean, this is the, there's over a hundred pages there, we've provided rebuttal. is the, there's over 100 pages there, we've provided rebuttal, testimony, we attended the actual hearings in front of the PUC in San Francisco, cross-examined witnesses, provided comments and whatnot along the way. So, a lot of effort has been spent on behalf of these residents and businesses by the city.
And it's your professional opinion that, as we sit here today, you are unable to find any infrastructure reason, any, the consolidation, any evidence that would justify this size of increase?
When you look at the Cal Am Thousand Oaks service area standalone, that is absolutely correct. In fact, here's an example. One of the things that we reviewed was their capital program. One reason for these large increases in the Cal Am service area might be that they have some very significant capital improvement needs...
Right. We've done that ourselves.
Yeah.
Right.
And so, over a three-year period, and I try, so it was apples to apples, what Cal Am is proposing to spend in their service area is about $22 million over three years. Our city service area, three-year capital program, is about $27 million. So there's really no difference there. In fact, we're spending a little bit more over the next three years, maybe because our service area is a little bit older, which it is, but, no, I really don't find good rationale for why there should be a 10%, over a 10% per year increase in the Cal Am service area.
Okay.
Mr. Adams?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So, yeah, we have three purveyors of water here in the city. Cal Am, they have the biggest percentage, followed by the city of Thousand Oaks, second-biggest purveyor, and then Cal Water, which is the third. And, as you said, the service area is similar, we're getting, we're all getting the water from the MWD, right, the Chapalm Water District, so it's the same water, they're not getting special water, are they?
No. All three are buying it from, actually, from the Cuyahoga Municipal Water District.
Okay, okay, it flows through Cuyahoga.
Exactly the same price, exactly the same water.
All right, and the infrastructure's costs are relatively the same. And, do I have the prop right? It's Prop 218, it says, none of the purveyors can make a profit on this, right? We have to, is that the right number? Is that the right prop, 218?
218 applies to governmental entities, so...
Oh, governmental, right, okay, got it.
We can't.
That's right, we can't.
But, but private purveyors through the CPUC process can ask for...
That's what it was, right, we can't make it. Well, okay, so like, as Mr. Fox was saying, I still have to get the justification, then, why their rate is so significantly higher? Maybe it is because of the profit motive, as she just mentioned?
Well, the answer is, it's because of the consolidation proposal. The way that they've structured that consolidation proposal, again, joining five different districts that heretofore had been separate, each having their own rates, covering their own costs, rate payers in those districts paying for their own costs. They're combining those now and spreading those costs over all five. And the way that the rates are structured, in this case, the residents of Thousand Oaks are paying, we believe, an unfair proportion, that we are subsidizing costs in those other service areas.
Hmm, yeah, that's the way it looks to me. We're getting the raw end of the deal. And as you say, we're subsidizing the others. Yeah. Well, I guess we'll hear from Cal Am, see what they have to say about that. Thanks.
Mr. Price?
Yes, thank you. As a Cal Am customer, I'm aggrieved a little bit more than perhaps some of the others up here on the dais, but I think, I think Rob is as well. And it does sound to me as though there are needs in other areas that the Thousand Oaks residents are being asked to cover for. You know, I've been part of a 218 process where it was shot down, and that doesn't happen very often, it wasn't here in the city of Thousand Oaks either, but it was another board that I sit on. And I have no doubt in my mind that if this were to go through the 218 process, there's no way that it would get through. I just hope that our residents will heed our warning here and the call to action and email the CPUC in regards to this proposed increase, to the tune of $4 million a year. That's significant. It seems, and, I don't know if there's a question in here, but it seems to me as though Coronado, the governing body down there, sold their, the most conservative water users down the Proverbial River, did they not? The most conservative users of water in Coronado will be paying higher rates than the folks who turn a faucet on and walk away.
Under the Coronado settlement, one of the elements of that was a new rate design. That was proposed as part of that settlement agreement. And based on some information that we received from Cal Am in response to our discovery request, we see that for all five of the districts, the people using water in the 25th percentile, which is the lower end of water usage, all end up with a higher increase, increased rate than those who consume higher, until you get up to about the top 5%. And then, in Thousand Oaks' case, the increase goes to 26% in the first year. So, yeah, it doesn't seem fair, it's not consistent across the board, it's hard to understand what this, you know, what this rate schedule is really all about.
Sounds like they're selling a soup sandwich here.
Thank you. Mr. Spurgeon, the question I have is, we've protested water rates before, when California Water wanted to raise its rate, and Cal Water, through an administrative law judge, did not raise its rates the way it wanted a few years ago. And, at the time, we knew that they were giving massive pay increases across the board, and, or was it the retirement benefits? I can't remember which it was. And that was used as a number-one reason as to their increase, and we fought it successfully. Is a increase in salary benefits, is that another reason why California, Cal Am is being stubborn with its rate increases?
In this rate case, I don't believe so. I mean, there's always an element of labor and benefits increase and various operational cost categories that are proposed to be increased, which would be similar to even our rate increase. But again, we're able to live on 1% per year increase. I do know that they have some significant capital projects that are proposed as part of this rate case. There's a, throughout the entire Southern California region, their five, in their five districts, they are asking for $20 million to deploy automatic meters, AMIs, throughout, basically, just get it all done at one time. That's a significant investment, obviously. I think that's a good investment. I believe that they should be more measured going forward with that, similar to what we've been doing, over more of a five, six, seven-year period, we've been replacing those meters, and will continue to do so for the next several years. They have the need to rebuild their headquarters in Rosemead, it's about a $3.5 million project. And then, I believe they have some groundwater treatment challenges in the Los Angeles districts. They have chromium 6 in some of the wells, it's a very expensive treatment process, those costs are included in this as well. So, I mean, granted, we all have to maintain our infrastructure, and that's good, and they're doing, they're doing so, but again, the way that this consolidation proposal's put together, we believe that our residents here are subsidizing much of those costs that are going to benefit other areas in Southern California.
Well, this is a perfect example why precious resources like water should be owned by a public agency, not by a private agency. All right, I think we can call our first speakers, Representatives of Cal Am. First one is Brian Baretto, followed by Jeff Lee Wan, or Lywin?
Good evening. My name is Brian Baretto, and I serve as External Affairs Manager for California American Water. I have some prepared remarks that I hope to get through, and I appreciate the council's opportunity to provide remarks. Joining me tonight are Jeff Linham, our Vice President of Rates, Bauman Portarian, Senior Analyst in Rates, and our local operations manager, Rick Saldivar. Our rate case includes the investments we think are needed to keep our water system in good working order, and we are pleased that the city agrees with us on the need for capital investments. The Commission conducts an exhaustive review of general rate case applications. Historically, the Commission does not approve utilities, including California American Water's full request, but rather something less. What this means is that the final approved increase may result in our customers' rates being on par with the other water providers in the city of Thousand Oaks. There are principally two parts of a general rate case. The first is the establishment of the revenue requirement, the second is to establish the rate design or the method for cost recovery. It is the second issue rate design that the city filed testimony. Only two cities that we serve in Southern California, Thousand Oaks and Coronado, intervened in our rate case. We were able to reach a settlement agreement with Coronado that we believe is a good solution and benefits Thousand Oaks' customers. We regret we were unable to reach a settlement with the city, and we're hopeful that Thousand Oaks would sign on to the Coronado settlement. In fact, the customers that benefit the most from the settlement with the city of Coronado are those here in Thousand Oaks. Under the Coronado settlement, the average customer in Thousand Oaks will now see a decrease in their overall bill as compared to what the bill would be under the current standalone rate design. We have taken into consideration the concerns of all parties and have lowered the Tier Two breakpoint and set the Tier Two rate at the average cost of water to better balance customer bill impacts while continuing to work towards state conservation goals. This means that those who use water wisely will be rewarded with lower average bills. To ensure modernization of the overall rate impact, the proposal assumes that 11% of the purchased water costs in Ventura and San Diego are transferred to our Los Angeles region, with the remaining 89% staying with customers in those specific areas. I would like to take a few minutes to address some points in the Public Works Department's staff report. First, our position is incorrectly characterized in the report. The report uses figures that were part of the July 2016 filing, rather than the August 2017 settlement. Second, the general rate case establishes rates for the test year 2018. Rates for 2019 and '20 are set based on separate filings that are generally limited to inflationary adjustments and reflect certain capital investments. Third, the average bill total in Table One is based on the settlement, is $115, not the $131 as presented. This is a base rate increase of 4.6% and assumes the Commission will approve our entire request, which rarely happens. Fourth, most of the impact bills, most of the impact to the bills are a result of increases in the wholesale water costs from Cuyahoga's municipal water districts. Since our filings, the cost of water from Cuyahoga has increased the average customer's bill by over $3 per month, and based on a forecast provided by the city, will increase the average customer bill by more than $5 per month, per year, for 2018 through 2020. The settlement would mean that for California American Water customers, the increase would be limited to 89% of that purchased water increase. Over time, these savings will accumulate to benefit all of our customers in the city. Finally, we have agreed in the settlement to propose full consolidation of our next rate case, which means that our Thousand Oaks customers will benefit from the consolidation of lower groundwater costs in our Los Angeles district and the purchased water costs from Cuyahoga being spread across all the customers in our Southern California district. If the city asks our customers to oppose the proposed settlement, it means they are supporting a rate design that potentially results in higher bills for them on standalone rates. Under the city's position of supporting standalone rates, the average residential customer in Thousand Oaks would see an 11% increase or an average monthly bill in 2018 of $117, while under our proposal, the average residential bill would be $115 or a 9% increase. We have attempted to communicate these facts to the city prior to tonight, and our hope was to reach a settlement with the city. As outlined above, the Coronado settlement provides savings to the Thousand Oaks customers. I'm hopeful in the future we can work together and avoid any miscommunications. Thank you for your time. My colleagues and I are available tonight to answer any questions that you may have, and in addition, we would be willing to meet at any time if you have questions about our positions, the benefits of rate consolidation. Thank you.
Thank you. How much time did the speakers get? Madam Clerk?
Speakers will be given three minutes.
Okay. Mr. Lywin? Anyone have any questions? Not yet. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I filed, I was told that I needed to file a card for Jeff Linham in case there were any questions, so he's here, available for questions, if any of the council or anybody has questions.
Thank you. Not at this point or time.
I'm Anita Schmidt, and I live in Newberry Park. One of the big questions I have here is, first, we're told there's a drought, and we should be very careful how much water we use. So now, if we do a good job of not using so much water, they're going to raise the rate on us because we use less water. That doesn't sound right. And also, this goes on every two years. I don't understand why a rate gets changed automatically every two years. The economy doesn't go up every two years. And another question I had was, I heard, I don't know if this is correct or not, but there's a built-in profit for this company? But it's city, the city makes sure that they get a built-in profit, is that right? Why should they get a built-in profit? No business gets a built-in profit. So I don't know why I should be held responsible for keeping them to make sure they get a profit you promised. So that's my statement.
Thank you. Nikidwai, and then Lynn Bertucci.
Nikidwai, resident of Newberry Park, Director of Consensus in Thousand Oaks. I don't come as a council critic, but as a council fan right now. Thank you so much for going the extra mile and protecting us from these greedy businesses. I know you are, we are just fighting this latest increase, but there are other things that I and other residents would like to do, is, water should not be a profit-making business, it should be a non-profit. So, work with Jackie Irvin and others to change that. What is the justification for all these increases? Pure, one word, greed. Greed. But you can only skin the cat so much. Like the gentle lady said, these rates have been going up. One of my sons is living in Utah, and it's like he's in another country, because their rates, I mean, $100, something like that for everything, including internet. And this is not subsidized or something. Something is wrong, some of these people who are in the CPUC are kind of saying, you pat me in the back, I will pat you in the back. So I'm glad that... So I'm glad that a judge, a neutral person, is looking at it. And as far as I'm concerned, I know some accounting is that what they're trying to pull off putting these areas in one so that they can make more money, I'm sure you have good attorney that will prevail. And some people will say, "Why $153,000?" It's a bargain, my friends. It's a bargain. I mean, if you have to go to court for anything nowadays, $200,000 is easily spent, and that's why I cannot afford to go to court. But I'm glad that you are going there. Some of the other things that they have done since the last few years, and I've been a customer since '77, is that they've tightened the belt, our belt, on our waists. There was no late fee, I believe. They did a stupid thing that no utility does, is that if you were going to be, you had three days left in your bill, they would have a truck go and drop bills out in front of the porch. That's all gone. In fact, they love it. And the other thing is that they have so many people working in the telecom, in the center. If you are 10 days before it, they'll call you three times a day or five times a day. That contributes to some of the costs. Thank you. Keep the fight.
Lynn Bertucci.
My name is Lynn Bertucci. I live in Thousand Oaks since 1978. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am totally opposed to their water rate increase. Okay, it seems to go up and up and up, yet I tore out my entire front lawn, the entire side street lawn, I live in a corner, and the parkways, and went through all the expense over and above the rebates to put in gravel instead of my nice green lawn so I could save water. I go as far as putting buckets in my shower at night. So the water that comes out in order to get warm comes from the other end of the house. And any overflow from when I'm taking the shower, I collect in the buckets and then I take it outside to wash my plants. So I try to conserve as much as possible because there's money involved too, as well as the idea of saving water. And we are drowning in water fees. First, we have the CalAM, which I understand now went from 30% in three years to 45%. All of a sudden, it's increased? That was fast. Because when I got here, I thought it was 30%. I don't want to pay for the people in San Diego, as much as I love my mother and my aunt who live in San Diego. I don't think it should be spread around. I don't want to pay for the people in LA. They have the DWP, which is, that's a whole nother story. And it seems to me that CalAM raises its fees all the time regardless of how much water we use or don't use. As you mentioned, and I even have the pamphlet with me, when CalAM sent out a flyer, "We're raising rates because we want to pay for the pensions of our employees." I have nothing against pensions. I get one. It's all just very small. But I don't know why I have to pay more and more for those. That's number one. Rate increase for water. Two, the state just passed SB 231, which you may or not be aware of. I know our mayor was not aware of it when I called her, and that's what they call the stormwater thing, because I was calling to see if the city took a position on that, and apparently you did not. Anyway, it passed, so now we will be getting an increase in our property taxes of $100 or more a year to tax the rain, basically rain that collects in your street, the water runoff. You can check that out. That's SB 231. And according to our Assemblywoman Irwin, she voted against it. In her own words, she said, "Because this will impose new fees and changes, excuse me, charges on property owners." And then, third, not as bad, the city itself, right, sent out a thing that you want to raise wastewater fees. So that's three. It's a triple whammy in a very short time, the worst being the 45% increase by CalAM Water, which I don't think is justified. Anyway, that's my story. Thank you. And many thanks to the City of Thousand Oaks and the Council for fighting CalAM Water, and you have all my support.
Thank you. That was our last speaker on this particular item. Mr. Baretto, you made several comments regarding, yes, you made several comments about the facts of the case, and I would like our Public Works Director, Mr. Spurgeon, to respond to that.
I'd be happy to do so. You know, what this, clearly the city and CalAM have not agreed about how this rate case has proceeded and the facts. And again, we come back to the city's basic premise is there's no reason that CalAM should increase its rates any more than the city or CalWater Service. Again, we're able to live on 1% per year, and the Coronado settlement did change. They changed the rate structure such that the average user, instead of a 10% per year increase, they're down to a 5%, a 4.76% for the first year. We don't know what the Year 2 and 3 are under the Coronado settlement because we weren't provided that information by CalAM. The original application from last year included all three years. So we're able to evaluate the full three years. 10%, 5%, I would submit that they should be at 1%, just like us. Again, there's no reason for them, other than this consolidation proposal where they're going to be spreading costs, and clearly, Thousand Oaks residents are going to be subsidizing costs outside of this area. But, you know, speaking to the Coronado settlement, yes, I did not use the numbers from that settlement. It hasn't been approved. That settlement is, if you use just the average residential usage and the percent increases as set forth in the data that they provided to us under that settlement, it's disingenuous. Because, yes, the average residential customer in Ventura would see a first-year increase under that settlement agreement of 4.76%, as pointed out by CalAM representative. But the 25th percentile user would see an 11% increase. The 50th percentile would see a 7%, I'm rounding here. The 75th percent, 5%, and the 95th percentile, the top 5% of users, 26% increase in year one. So to be able to say, "Well, the average residential user is 4.76," doesn't tell the whole story. Under the original proposal, the increases are much more consistent across the spectrum of usage. So an average residential increase, whatever that percent number is, is a little more representative. It's interesting that under the Coronado settlement, when you look at the San Diego numbers, their average residential customer under that settlement will see a negative 4.2% increase in the first year. 25th percentile, 2.6% increase. 50th, negative 1.45. 75th, negative 7.13. And their top 5% of users in the Coronado service area will see a negative 19.45% decrease. It is absolutely incongruous, and to suggest that the Coronado settlement is a blessing to the city, to the residents and businesses in the City of Thousand Oaks in their service area is inaccurate, in my opinion. I believe that the first resident who spoke during public comments, who said that they have built-in profit, is actually very accurate. They have a guaranteed rate of return on their capital investment. Essentially, CalAM and other private water purveyors loan themselves money to do capital projects, and then they're able to get, over time, a rate of return. And they are able, over the three years, through what's called advice letters, which are filings that have really no public review to them, that they can adjust and they can add surcharges over time to make up for lost revenue. If they projected that they were going to get so much revenue, and that's actually less, they can submit a surcharge. If their costs are higher than they project, they can submit a surcharge. So when you look at a CalAM water bill, such as my own, and you look at how the water bill is structured, there are the typical, there's the typical base rate, monthly charge, and then there's the water costs for each tier. And then there is a whole list of surcharges. And in fact, the surcharges make up, on my water bill from last month, 27% of my total bill. When you look at, and that's just how they do it, okay? I get it. That's a different way of billing people, and it's all per PUC rules. When you look at a City of Thousand Oaks water bill, this is Felicia's, you have a base charge, and you have a quantity charge for Tier 1, Tier 2, and Tier 3. You get a total, and that's it. Now, every water company doesn't have to do it the way CalAM does. CalWater Service, again, our eastern private water company, they actually roll those surcharges into their rates as they go along. So it's much similar to what the city is. So, I'm sorry, probably more detail than I should have went into, but that was in response to the guaranteed profit, the built-in returns. It really makes, and it's unfortunate, but it really makes a rate case with the PUC so complicated and so convoluted that it's difficult for average residential, I mean, it's difficult for me to understand and really follow this and put it all in perspective. And I hope that that's kind of what we're trying to do and what we've been able to do.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I should have brought my water bill, too. Mr. Fox, then Mr. McCoy, and then Mr. Price.
Yeah, Mr. Baretto, you want to come back up and answer some questions?
If I'm not able to answer, Jeff Linham, our Vice President of Rates, we'd be more than happy to help address some of the questions that you guys may have.
Okay. I noticed you were taking copious notes when Mr. Spurgeon was responding to the Council about your earlier testimony. I'm just curious, do you dispute his kind of more detailed breakdown of some of your statements on actually what, when you get the whole story, what those really, what the numbers really are? Do you dispute that?
Jeff, do you want to take that?
Sure. And keep in mind, this is televised council meeting. People are watching. So let's try to keep it at a basic level and not confuse people with a bunch of water company speak that nobody understands.
I will speak very clearly and
Did you understand the question, sir? I didn't get your name, by the way.
Jeff Linham, VP of Rates. It's a little bit of a dual reality here, because I think a lot of what Mr. Spurgeon has said may have elements of accuracy, but if I may explain, you know, what the PUC process is and what the city's involvement has been in the case, I would be more than happy to. As Mr. Baretto said, there are two parts of a general rate case. There is the revenue requirement, and that's where we put forward our costs and our capital investment projects, and then there's the rate design. In terms of the revenue requirement, the City of Thousand Oaks filed no testimony on any of the issues related to our O&amp;M costs or our capital costs. And we're pleased that the city found our filing and those capital projects to warrant not commenting in testimony. The basis of the city's testimony has been, has been on the rate design. And when we filed the rate design, we made a proposal back in July of 2016. What we've subsequently done is, we have entered into a settlement with the City of Coronado, and we also provided responses to Mr. Spurgeon and to the attorney of the city outside Council, providing specific rates. So we will provide a report to the city, responding to the staff report with the actual numbers. But let me state, in terms of Coronado, Coronado entered into a settlement that actually was less of a benefit to Coronado customers than what our original application was. Why would the City of Coronado do that? I believe it's because the City of Coronado sees the long-term benefit of consolidation. When you look at, 55% of our costs in Thousand Oaks are purchased water costs, the cost increases going up are largely a result of wholesale water costs. Mr. Spurgeon provided us a schedule that showed five years of increases associated with Cuyagus, which is a metropolitan member, provider. That forecast stated that their purchased water costs were going to go up 5% a year. What that means for our residents in Thousand Oaks is that their monthly bill will go up $5 a month in '18, in '19, and '20. When we filed our application on July 1, our bill was our average customer bill, and 65% of our customers are below the average, just so that we understand what average means.
Mr. Linham, I don't want to interrupt you, but I'm going to.
Okay.
Sure. Let me just cut to the chase. Can you explain why there is such a great deviation between your proposed rates, CalAM's proposed rates, and the city and CalWater?
Well, I talked to CalWater, and I know that the numbers that were provided in the staff report, they weren't aware of that number. So I can speak to us and I can speak to the process. What I can say is that Coronado sees the benefit of the fact that purchased water costs are going to be spread, and the cheaper groundwater costs in Los Angeles are going to be made available as those costs are spread to our customers in Thousand Oaks. So that's the first part of the rate case. The second part is
See, but if I, just to kind of, what you're saying is, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I think I was listening pretty closely, because of some groundwater that's going to be available through Los Angeles, somehow the rates are going to go down?
The
That's what you said?
Yes.
Okay.
What I'm saying is, what I'm saying is that relative to our customers paying 100% of Cuyagus' costs, under consolidation, that would be spread.
When would you expect the people of Thousand Oaks, when are they going to see those reduced rates?
Well, if the settlement is approved, they would start to see the fact that they would be responsible for 89%, not 100% of the purchased water costs from Cuyagus. And what we've provided in that settlement is that in the next rate case, we would at a minimum provide, propose, full consolidation. And under full consolidation, our customers would benefit from the fact that all those costs were spread.
Okay, so again, I'm going to take another shot at it. Can you explain why there is such a large deviation between CalAM's proposed rates, $131, City, $112, CalWater, $118? You talked about Coronado, you talked about, can you just explain
When we filed the original application, we proposed that, we proposed certain tier breaks and certain rates. And what we've And what we've done in the settlement with Coronado is we have expanded the Tier 2 and 3 consumption bans, which allows the average customer rates to be in the settlement 115 versus what we filed for in the original application. There are some other elements in terms of how purchased water costs are handled as well.
So your testimony is that you have offered a settlement similar to Coronado, that if we, the city were to agree to that, your rate would actually be less than CalWater?
Our rate would be less, if the settlement is approved...
You said 115.
If the settlement is approved, as Mr. Barretto said, the average customer bill in 2018, inclusive of purchased water increases, would be $115.
In Thousand Oaks?
In Thousand Oaks.
All right. Just stay right there. Mr. Spurgeon? Do you want to comment on that?
Absolutely.
I figured you would.
Specifically to 115 versus 131, that may be so for the average customer, but again, he's not telling the entire story when users at a lower rate, that people who are actually conserving, using less water, their increase is over double what the average customer is. I don't think that's fair. You are, you know, they are...
Mr. Liman, can you comment on that?
Yeah, absolutely. I will read them out, so that we have the numbers here. And this was provided to the city. So for our average residential customer with 135.3 CGLs, or 100 gallons, in 2018, and again, this is without the purchased water increases, would be $110.79, and that's a 4.76% increase.
This is for the lowest users?
This is for the average, first of all. For the lowest, for the 25%, the average bill would be $55.71, and that is using 59.8 CGLs a month.
So the average bill for the people that use, the 25% of the people that use the least amount of water, $55 and change?
That's correct.
What are they currently paying?
That is a 10.9% increase on a percentage basis.
So they're saving water, but you guys are going to charge them 10% more, 11% more?
Well, can I add one more thing?
Sure.
What we filed for is, what these rates are based on is what we filed for in our 100-day update. As Mr. Barretto said, we rarely get what we have requested, and I think the mayor had mentioned this was something that she said...
Let me just jump in right there, because you guys have said that a couple times. I'm not disputing that that may be the case, but if we were to take that proposition, the insinuation is we should just sit back and roll the dice and hope that the PUC does what they've done in the past. But if we're wrong, that lady right there and some of the other people here, they get a giant water increase. I don't think that's a good deal for the city to do that. So can you at least acknowledge that if you were sitting in my seat, you probably wouldn't take that course of action? Is that fair?
I totally understand. I mean, any rate increases is challenging. We understand that.
All right, so, let me just, so you do acknowledge that Mr. Spurgeon's analysis of the lowest 25% are getting somewhere in the neighborhood of 11% increase in their water bill?
Correct.
Okay, now, we're making some headway here, just for understanding. And by the way, I know this is difficult, you guys, you're showing up, so we're not trying to personally attack anybody, just let me say that as the outset. Now let's move to the highest water users. Mr. Spurgeon indicated that the highest water users are going to get a 25%, I think I heard him saying.
Yeah, let me make sure that, if you don't mind, the 50 percentile will be 93.17, and that's a 6.56% increase.
Okay.
The 75th percentile would be $148.46, and that's a 5.42% increase. And then the 95th percentile, which many of those customers don't reside in the City of Thousand Oaks, their rate would be $360.87, and that is a 25.5% increase.
Okay. So, Mr. Liman, is it fair to say, at least, because I think Mr. Spurgeon may agree with it, that what Mr. Spurgeon outlined to the city, you actually agree with those numbers? I don't have to try to put words in your mouth, but that's what you just said.
To the extent that Mr. Spurgeon was talking about the settlement, which is what our current position is.
Right.
He initially, and in the staff report, it talks about what we filed nearly 18 months ago, and is not our current position.
Okay.
And like what I said, if the commission approves what they've historically approved, we will get less than this. And then let me just comment, for '19 and '20, we get inflationary increases only, and there is some, if we invest capital, we do get some cost recovery associated with that capital. And those have tended to be a couple percent historically.
Okay.
So I guess what I'm trying to say is, number one, I take issue with the way that the staff report, you know, did not focus on really what our position is with the settlement. Number two, that actually we see benefits to customers in Thousand Oaks, and in fact, if the settlement is not approved, the rates will be higher in Thousand Oaks based on the current rate design. And then the third piece...
So let me just, again, would it be a fair assumption that the five folks here and some of the folks over there would be interested in the lowest possible water rates for their residents?
Absolutely.
Okay.
There's no disagreement here with that.
So...
As long as it's, I mean, we have certain regulations, we've got public safety and health, we've got, you know, mains that need to be replaced, I think our replacement cycles are about...
If your settlement offer is so good, and the rates are actually going to be lower, why is our staff telling us that that's not a good deal? Are you saying the staff doesn't understand? It's okay if you think that, I just want to get clarification.
Well, I think that in the long term, Thousand Oaks will benefit hugely, not only there's this settlement, but if we get full consolidation, all of a sudden, the enormous increases in purchased water costs, and that 5% that was provided, we haven't even seen the delta fixed costs that are going to come through with Metropolitan. And if our city, if our residents in Thousand Oaks are having to pay all of those costs rather than having those costs spread and having the availability of groundwater costs which are cheaper and expected to not increase to the degree that purchased water costs are, I think that is in the interest of the citizens of Thousand Oaks.
Let me ask you a question, and I don't know if you can answer it, maybe Mr. Barretto. Is there a profit margin built into these rate increases?
We have an allowed return, it is not a guaranteed return, like Mr. Spurgeon said. We operate an efficient system, which should, the fact that our rates are equivalent to the City of Thousand Oaks should, you know, that's certainly one point of marker to say that, yes, we earn a profit. There are years we haven't earned...
Yeah, the question is, is there a profit margin built into these proposed rate increases?
We do not make money, we make money on, we make a return on the investment that we make in the ground. There is not a profit margin on our purchased water, our O&amp;M costs, or anything like that. The way that the rates are set is we develop what our rate base is. There is a proceeding that looks at the return on that, which actually is going on right now. And based on that, the commission gives us an allowed return. Now, we have to operate efficiently in order to meet that.
Okay. We had testimony tonight that, and if you know, somehow that this increase is tied to pensions and pension enhancements. Let me say at the outset, I'm getting a pension, some of my colleagues are getting, I'm not against pensions, and I'm not against people getting a pension that work hard for a long time. But I think for the record, if you could clarify, because the statement was made, if that in fact is any part of this formula here.
Most of our employees don't get a pension. I do not get a pension. We stopped our pension, I can't remember the exact year, 2000. So any employees that joined CalAM after 2000 do not receive a pension. We get a 401K.
Okay.
And that's our...
All right, I appreciate that. We want to operate on facts.
And obviously, part of the rate cases, they review all of our staffing levels, all of our salaries, and they go through and they determine what, based on our presentation of the evidence, whether they think that's justified or not. And often, the commission will reduce our request.
We have a couple of council members still wanting to ask a question, but I was wondering, you did say that Thousand Oaks residents or ratepayers would benefit from full consolidation? Sorry, I lost my little thing here on the microphone. Why not do full consolidation now?
Well, we have to do it as part of our rate case, certainly. It's something that we looked at. I think the challenge is, with any kind of rate changes, you want it to be incremental. I mean, you know, if you're moving to consolidation, we believe that in the long term, it's a benefit, in the sense that you're spreading costs over a larger base of customers. If there's an investment, you know, if there's a tank that needs to be built in Thousand Oaks, right now, the customers in Thousand Oaks pay that. If in the future, there's a project in, let's say, San Diego County, it gets spread, so it reduces the volatility in your rates by spreading it. So we've made this proposal, we've modified it considerably with the settlement, but we do, we have agreed with the City of Coronado that we will propose full consolidation in the next rate case.
I do have another question, but I know that Mr. McCoy and Mr. Price would like to ask you as well.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Barretto, you stated that standalone is $117 per average? And what did you say for consolidation?
Yes, in 2018, it would be $117, and then...
For standalone?
Yes, that is correct. And then, under the consolidation proposal, it would be $115 per month at a 9% increase. That was in my remarks, yes.
Okay, so for five of the cities that are, or the water districts that are willing to consolidate, it would go down to 115, is that correct?
That's the average rate for customers in Ventura. So we consolidate the costs, but we set the tier breaks, and depending on where the consumption is in each district, the average may be, would be different.
So if we decided, you wouldn't have any problem, just us standing alone, if we were willing to take $117, opposed to $115, because there's no subsidizing any of these other districts, and we wouldn't be a problem? Would you let us stand alone?
I mean, our proposal is that we proposed consolidated rates.
But we wouldn't affect you, because you're telling us, you know, we'll take that $2 more if you let us stand alone. Why would you need us if we're not subsidizing anyone?
Yeah, and you can certainly, you know, provide comments like that if that's your preference. I mean, if that's the position. Our position is that we think that consolidation provides benefits for a number of reasons. It reduces volatility.
We're concerned with what you're putting out, so just let us stand alone. And we don't have to worry about the groundwater contamination and all the fees that you're having to subsidize, let us just stand alone.
We have a settlement that we filed with the City of Coronado to consolidate the Southern District, so...
Mr. Price?
Thank you, and I want to echo some of the comments that were made by Councilmember Fox earlier, and this is not personal. A wise man once said that, you know, whiskey's for drinking and water's for fighting over, so I think that's, in essence, what we're doing here, so. And I do recognize that imported water costs are going up. It costs more, unfortunately, to convey that water from Northern California down here to Southern California. And as you mentioned, we don't know what the impacts of, or if the twin tunnel project will ever be built, so I get that. I also understand that, and I'm not suggesting that CalAM is, this is not a agreed thing. I certainly have no evidence to suggest that, but I do know that it's easier to sell this concept over a larger area. And the larger you can make it, the better off it is for certain people. And it seems that Coronado might benefit a little bit more. The figures that you were giving out to Councilmember Fox earlier, the, those figures, did they include the purchased water costs as well?
They did not. But the purchased water increase is about, well, the purchased water increase would be about $5 a month, but under consolidation, that would be 89%, so it'd be about $4.40 that you'd add to that.
Okay. And you've heard, you've heard Mr. Spurgeon talk about our own water system here and the costs over the next two years and what they're going to be. My question to you is, how do you suggest I sell this to the residents of Thousand Oaks? If their water bills, my own included, are going to increase, I'm going to call it exponentially over the next three years, regardless of the imported water costs, how do I sell that?
Well, you know, like I said, much of the costs in Thousand Oaks are purchased water costs, and so, you know, a lot of the cost increases coming through are related to our costs from Cigas. As far as the consolidation and the rate design...
Not under consolidation. Not under consolidation, they're not.
So, yeah, so, right. So under consolidation, I believe that the interest to the residents of Thousand Oaks is the fact that the purchased water cost is a significant component of the water bill today. And I think, as Mr. Spurgeon provided forecasts, and I think there are many costs that may not be reflected in that, as those costs go up, I think that it is beneficial for the customers in Thousand Oaks to begin to benefit from lower groundwater costs that will not be increasing at the pace of purchased water costs, and that ultimately, full consolidation will benefit Thousand Oaks customers. You know, I think Mr. Barretto said that the customers in Thousand Oaks actually benefit...
So you're suggesting that at some point in the future, there will be a leveling out, and we'll all kind of be roughly in the same area?
I'm sorry.
As far as water costs? That there'll be a leveling out of the costs, and that we will all, in all of those consolidated areas?
I do know there's been discussions at the State Water Board about concerns about, you know, large differences in regional water costs, and you may have a poor disadvantaged community that has very high costs next to a very wealthy community that has low costs. And I think, I mean, those are public policy issues that the state is discussing. So I don't know if that's where the state ultimately wants to head.
Well, you folks have been sent here to do a difficult job to try and sell us on a concept that, quite frankly, I don't think, our staff has invested a lot of time, we've invested a lot of money in trying to understand this, and there are certainly people much brighter than I am when it comes to these water issues that are taking a look at this. And I have to trust that our staff here is doing their work, and they're reporting things accurately to us. And I don't see that there's any way that the City of Thousand Oaks would ever be able to agree to this at this point.
And I would like to, I will make my... And I would like to, I will make myself available and others at our offices to meet with our customers and others that want to understand consolidation more fully.
Be careful what you wish for. You don't want to uncork that bottle.
Mr. Lyman, before we go back to Mr. Spurgeon, I wanted to find out, since Coronado did not oppose the original consolidation proposal, why are they allowed through your settlement to make decisions affecting other cities, such as us?
I think it ultimately comes down to the commission to decide. The assigned law judge will weigh the facts, will look at, at, you know, does the settlement meet the public interest? You know, does it, you know, does it benefit the majority of customers? I'm not sure exactly the criteria that they will use, but it ultimately will be decided by the commission. And, you know, there's evidence that certainly, Mr. Spurgeon and others have entered into the record. That will all be considered as part of the process.
Which is the reason we're asking our residents, those who are the Cal Am ratepayers, to voice their concerns directly to the CPUC and the entire commission. With that, I'd like to ask Mr. Spurgeon to respond.
Madam Mayor, there's been a lot of points made here tonight. Mr. Lyman has made a number of points. Frankly, I believe that I could rebut many of them. I don't know that we want to drag this out and spend a lot more time on that. I can tell you that the standalone option, if, as Mr. Lyman points out, that Cal Am probably won't get all that they ask for, the standalone option would go down as well. And that'd be great. If they, you know, if they could end up with a 2% or 3% per year increase for the residents of Thousand Oaks, without the imported water, I mean, that's a lot closer to what we're proposing than where they started. I think it's instructive that city of Thousand Oaks, the county of Los Angeles, on behalf of those three communities in Los Angeles County, and the Office of Ratepayer Advocates, which is an arm of this PUC, have all opposed, gone on record to oppose, this settlement. We opposed consolidation from the get-go. We still oppose consolidation. If their original consolidation proposal was a true full consolidation, the residents of Thousand Oaks, their water costs would go down for the very reasons that Mr. Lyman is suggesting, in the long run, would happen. And that would have been great. And we would, I think we would have been very happy with a full consolidation proposal. The problem with that is, there's winners and losers. If we win, those communities in LA, and perhaps even in Coronado, lose out big time. And in the long run, and when you meld groundwater costs, which are cheaper, and imported water costs, which are much higher, and you try to meld those out, the winners are those who are relying on imported water, that's us and Coronado. The losers are the groundwater communities in Los Angeles County. Next rate case, if full consolidation is proposed, if I were in Duarte, or Baldwin Hills, or San Marino, I'd be fighting that tooth and nail, because my rates are going to go up significantly. Because it's all, it's all a zero-sum game here. Again, I think that what's being presented to us from the get-go, I think this proposal still is just not fair. I come back to the city's position from the beginning, which is, there's no reason for Cal Am's increases to be any greater than the city's over the next two years. That, in a sense, is our, were our comments on their rate proposal and their rate design. No, we didn't get into the nitty-gritty, as Mr. Lyman pointed out. He's correct. We didn't. But by making a case that our costs are essentially identical, there's no reason that their increases should be so much higher. And that's, again, the essence of our position. I'm happy to answer any other questions you may have. I think that's probably enough to try to wrap this up.
Thank you, Mr. Spurgeon. Yeah, I'm sure we would be here until midnight. Are there any additional, no questions anymore from council members? Thank you, Mr. Lyman.
Thank you.
And this was an update to the city council, as well as a call to all of the Cal Am customers in the city of Thousand Oaks, to please email your concerns to, do we have that slide again? We are calling on our local newspapers, The Star and The Acorn, to help us with that. There you have it.
Again, Madam Mayor, that's www.toaks.org/calwater, Cal Am Water, that's our webpage, and comments can be submitted via email to publicadvisor@cpuc.ca.gov.
Almost half of the residents of Thousand Oaks are customers of Cal Am. And if you are standing with the city in opposing the rate hikes and the consolidation at this time, as well as the settlement, then we really need you, the ratepayer, to take action as well. Because after $150,000 of legal fees, we didn't get anywhere with Cal Am. So it's now up to you, the ratepayers.
Madam Mayor, I'm certain that Council Member Price and myself will be following up on your request, being customers of Cal Am.
I want you to lead the charge. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you. And thank you very much for coming tonight as well, and answering all of our questions. I appreciate that. And I believe that that is it for the city of Thousand Oaks council meeting. We are adjourned until next Tuesday at 6:00. Did you have any comments, Mr. Powers?
Yes, Madam Mayor, just quickly, we do meet again next week on the 26th. And because I know that the city council can't get enough of water issues, we'll be taking up water and wastewater financial plans next week, along with an update regarding Westside property development and the Sumato E&amp;A lease agreement issue, along with a couple of follow-ups from the League of California Cities and National League of Cities conferences. That is it for right now.
Thank you. And we are adjourned until next Tuesday, the 26th. Good evening.